Join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yea.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yea.
Trustee Marisak?
Here.
Trustee Bond?
Here.
All right. We're gonna jump around just a little bit at the beginning. We're gonna do our check presentations for the River Run first. And I'll turn it over to the chief of the run. The head organizer, whatever the title is that you'd like.
Actually, the more of the jester than the head organizer. The race director in our office is Angie Smith, so... Well, thank you. And as I'm speaking, there's gonna be a running display of different things and photos from the run, so I hope you won't have to look at me. You can look at that, and it'll be a more enjoyable experience. So, first of all, I just want to say, it was a very successful run. We had 29 sponsors, which was our most ever, which was great. And I'd like to read those off quick, because I think it's important. Because obviously, what we're doing the race for is just to raise money for charity. We were able to raise just over $7,000 this year. So, our award sponsor this year was South Moon Barbecue. And when you're the award sponsor, your picture is on the sponsor trophy. So, there was a picture of their new location out in, at the Gray's Mill. So, that's worked out really well this year. And then, our other gold sponsors were Dick Pond Athletics, Rush Copley Medical Center, Engineering Enterprises, and Village of Montgomery. Then, we had quite a few silver sponsors. Pzone Associates, Dolan &amp; Murphy, Lacone Company, Walmart, VVF Illinois Services, Lion LLC, High Cutter, Ryland Homes, Ozenga, Matt Walker Attorney at Law, Home Pantry &amp; Liquors, Avalon Development LLC, BMO Harris Bank, Rosati's and Montgomery Pizza Pub, RJ O'Neal, Chiquita. So, those are our silver sponsors. And then, we had a number of our regular sponsors, and that was Scott Eye Care, All Steel Credit Union, Montgomery Rotary Club, Kaufman Truck Sales, Fox Valley Park District, Sports Authority, Panera Bread of Oswego, and United Facilities. So, again, thanks to all the sponsors. It was really great to have that kind of support for the event. Also, wanted to thank our volunteers from the village side. We had a number of village officials and staff there. Mayor Broly was there, trustee Marisak, trustee Youngerman, Stan Bond, trustee Bond, who is also our photographer, Jeff and Teagan Zolfo were there, Justin Van Vuren and his family, and Rich Young. From the police department, we had Sergeant Palco, who organized the police activities for us, and other officers that supported her. We had Public Works, of course, Todd Happenstat, Don Schomer, and Corey Kennedy were there, helping out, setting up signs and getting things ready. We had the Montgomery and Countryside Fire Protection District there with the snorkel unit, which is always a big plus for the kids and for everybody, really. Montgomery Rotary was there. We had a number of EEI staff there, helping out at registration. And we had the Fox Valley Run Junkies there. And as I mentioned, our race director was Angie Smith from our office. So, again, we had a great, a great race, about 250 runners, 29 sponsors, as I said. So, that was a big plus. And so, we'd like to now have the presentation of the checks. We have two checks we're gonna give out this year. One is gonna go to the Montgomery VFW, and the other is going to go to the Montgomery Foundation. So, Mayor, I'd ask if you would come forward and help me hand out those checks? And I'd ask if the VFW would come up first, please?
Yeah, don't spend it, John.
Got money to buy some tickets.
And just one last thing. We have some thank you dollars for the volunteers. So, the first one is for the Village of Montgomery. So, I'll give that one to the mayor. And I should also mention that one of the village attorneys was our fastest female runner. So, that eliminates Steve by convention, I guess. So, congratulations to Laura. She did a great job, was the fastest runner. I don't remember the time, but it was pretty, pretty great, so. So, we had a great run. Thanks for everybody, and thanks for everybody that participated. Next year's run is the first weekend in October, and it's, the date is at the, at the end of the presentation. I don't remember it right now, so I needed to do a little more homework before I got here. Anyway, so, thanks again. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Pete. Appreciate it. All right, move back up to... You forgot that it was the first. Thanks, Pete. Appreciate it. All right, move on to, move back up to item A, which is public comment. This is the two-minute opportunity that any member of the public, resident, has to address the board on any topic that you wish. If there are any, please come to the podium at this time.
Hi. Most of you know who I am. I've been in a couple of times the last few months. Still having the same problems. I actually replaced a filter today about four o'clock. It's already started to turn orange. Couple loads of laundry, few dishes. I understand that there was supposed to be a meeting between Public Works and Matt Broly last week. I haven't heard anything more about my request for help, why they find what the problem is, long-term, but in a short-term, help for us. Because the filters are still there. They're just as bad as ever. And the only way I can keep clean water in the house, not safe, but clean water in the house, is with a one-micron filter. And I'm just wondering if there's been anything more about that.
Thank you, Dave. Appreciate it. Without drumming up the entire history of this, I know that a letter went out. It went out, it was, the entire board was copied on it, believe last week or the week before, or a few weeks before that. And that Public Works is still investigating the issue. And if Public Works Director has any additional comment, you can chime in.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Rehzen. Just an update. I did leave Mr. Kennedy a voicemail about a week and a half ago, just to try and bring him up to speed a little bit. The process in which we're investigating and evaluating our next steps is somewhat lengthy. It appears that through the addition of polyphosphate at the lime softening plant on Nell Road, we'll have the best success in mitigating this issue that he and his neighbors are suffering from. However, there are numerous vendors of that product, and there are numerous different recipes, if you will, on how to go about this. We introduced polyphosphate at the other two treatment plants. And as the waters from the Nell Road facility and the other facilities would mix in the system, you have dissimilar waters, essentially. So, it's, it's important to us that we get it right the first time. It's gonna be a costly endeavor to introduce it, and we don't take the, you know, the issue lightly. So, what we've done is, through working with some of the vendors that we've met with, we've met with three to evaluate different options, both Public Works staff and EEI staff. We've installed two coupon racks, and what those are is, basically flows water from the system through it and reacts to different metals. There's one located at our facility on Nell Road, and one located in the basement of the village hall. Will give us two different sample sets, and based on that data, we should best determine the recipe. But that's about a 60-day process. So, within the 60 days, we have a 30-day sample, a 60-day sample, and a second 30-day sample. And that, that's what we'll use to generate enough data to make an informed decision. I anticipate a recommendation will be in front of the board probably by the first of February, and then at which time we can move forward.
Thank you, Todd. This is a very complex problem. It's, it's a lot, I think, more in detail than I think we envisioned at the start. I was hoping that it would be an easy solution, but it's not. But I hope that the message comes across from us as the board and staff that it's a very serious issue, and that it's one that we're actively looking to solve.
I agree that you're investigating it, and Todd has made it perfectly clear. But I still ask the same question. In the meantime, it's still costing me as much to filter my water as my water bill. And that's the question I have. Is the board willing to supply filters, reduce the water bill, or something in between, where I'm not paying more to filter the water I'm getting than what I'm paying for the water? And that's, that's my biggest concern. I know, long-term, they're trying to do it, and I know Todd is doing everything in his power. But short-term, has to be from the village board, not from Public Works. Long-term will be great. Short-term, will help anybody that's got a problem now.
I hear the request loud and clear. I would open it up to the board if there's any comments, suggestions. This is a very tricky situation for us to be in, because while I completely understand your issue in that you're having to buy one micron filters for your home, to get it to a quality that you're satisfied with, which may be higher than what somebody else needs to be satisfied with the water, or not as stringent. If we entertain the idea to rebate funds to you for your situation, then we have to be prepared to rebate or do that same level of compensation to anybody else with, with less than, I guess, when they, when they get water that's less than their standard, when it does meet federal standards. So, I know this is a gray area, and I, I actually really understand your problem. I've had that problem in the past. But the cost to implement something like this far exceeds anything that we would be rebating back on the village standpoint.
Oh, I agree with what you have to do to do the mains, but again, short-term, as I explained before, this started back with Maryland, and it's just progressed. So, for me, this has been a great outlay, considering the last administration basically just kinda shoved it under the table. So, I'm, again, I'm asking for something from the village board. I mean, I know someone on the board, and I'm not sure who it was, said he wouldn't take a bath in the water. Well, I wouldn't either. But when it starts staining everything, clothes, appliances, everything, that becomes a bigger cost to an individual than rebating the filters would be by the village. And if not enough people come up, that means the village doesn't have to outlay as much money. But until that point, I think you ought to help the few people that are having the major problems right now.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public, other member of the public that wishes to address the board? If you guys are all here on the same topic, that's great. Could you just make them brief?
My name's Joe Renzetti. I'm his neighbor. And we've been dealing with this problem for a long time, and it's never been mentioned. But it's getting worse to the point, Mr. Mayor, that if you were living in our household, or you had the same condition and the same problem, how would you address it? Not being belligerent, but something has to be done about it, because you can't wash, you can't take a bath, you can't take a shower, your tub is scummy, your sinks, you have people come in to visit you, and you look like you're a vagabond for crying out loud, you know? And I know that if you were living in our house and had the same predicament, you probably would see it through different eyes, a different picture. But the picture is that it remains, okay? And I'm not being hard-nosed. I think something should be done about it, because when you run the water, it's clear. Overnight, you go and you look at your toilets, you get up in the morning, and you're in a hurry to do something, or you have to, you know, I do a lot of volunteer work. I have to get out and make sure I'm on time. Now, I have to fool around with the bathroom and clean it before I even want to get in the tub and take a shower. That's not conducive to us. So, we would appreciate if you would look in it a little deeper and see what you can do for us and resolve the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. And Joe, was one, was his house on the sample list that we sampled previously?
I'm not sure if the address is off the top of my head, but I can certainly check. We did sample a number of them. I think all but one on Jefferson Street, between the river and River Street.
Because that, correct me if I'm wrong, that data is very crucial or important in this process in isolating a problem or finding a solution. So, if your house wasn't tested, if you're not agreeable to that, I get it. If you are, and we can test the, the water as it comes in, that really gives us a good baseline moving forward. All right, is there...
My name is Richard Mudd. I live on K Street. I'm having the same problem. Just wanted to come here tonight and let you know. It's been a very long time, and this has been an issue. I have a picture right now. I'll show you. This is my bathtub that I bathe my 18-month daughter in with brown. It's disgusting, okay? Matt, when you were my neighbor, you were having the same issues. You told me that you wouldn't drink the water, that you wouldn't have your baby drink the water, and your wife doesn't drink the water, that you have bottled water. So, everyone knows about this problem. It's been going on for years. And once again, whether it's been shoved under the table or not, it's about time that we have this fixed for us. We lived down there. We're in an older part of town. We don't have an association to come here that has a big clout with you guys. So, I just ask for something to be done, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Two things. One, you guys have tremendous clout when you come to board meetings and address the board. As residents and as individuals, you don't need an association for that. The other thing is, I did drink the water down there, and the village did some work on K Street back then, since then even, to improve the water quality. But until I heard from you and your neighbor two doors up a few months ago, three months ago, I didn't know that that situation was actually still continued. So, hopefully, we can convey the message, you can come on up, to you guys and to your neighbors, that we are looking into this situation in this older part of town, and we're, we're working on that.
Definitely same concern. I'm neighbors with them over here, too.
Can you name your...
My name's Mark Freeman. I'm over on 517 South River Street, so I'm a couple houses down from where they're at. Just same kinda deal. Shower's rusty. Got to clean it once every couple of weeks. Toilet's the same way. I got white t-shirts that are coming out looking like tie dye. I like, I like tie dye, but it's really not, not what I'm going for. And I mean, if that's the case, if I'm cooking with this water and I'm drinking it, I want to make sure it's safe. And I, I mean, I realize that the board's doing something, and I appreciate that. This is the first time I've been to a meeting, but I definitely like to see a little bit more, you know, progress, if it's possible. I'm sure there's different ways to, you know, skin a cat and try to figure out the best way to resolve the issue.
Thank you, Mark. And Mark and Richard, too, if you guys are agreeable to sampling the water, correct me if I'm wrong, staff, but the, all of the samples that we've taken have been safe per federal regulations, correct?
That is absolutely correct.
So, what we're talking about is rust, which is not regulated by the US EPA, and, you know, Todd or Pete can elaborate on that more, but it's more of a...
It's an aesthetic standard.
An aesthetic standard for it. And it does impact the taste on that, too, so.
Not a problem. Can you repeat your address? Will do. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Any other member of the public wishing to address the board this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on. The consent agenda, I'll read the items and entertain a motion for approval. There was a request to move, to pull item F, which is ordinance 1697, and that will now be item J under items for separate action. So, we have executive session minutes from October 12th, minutes of the village board meeting of October 26th, building report for October of 2015, accounts payable through November 5th, 2015, cancellation of the November 17th committee of the whole meeting, and approval of the 2015-16 snow removal and ice control plan.
Still moved.
That good?
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yea.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yea.
Thank you. Carry six zero. Moving on, item for separate action, we have item A, recommendation of the plan commission of 2015-009 SUPUD, special use for a planned unit development for university athletic campus at 1700 Jericho Road, Aurora University. And then, item B, which is ordinance 1700, granting the special use. That's the first reading of that. So, with that, I'll kick it over to our director of, well, it says Director of Finance, Justin Van Born, but... Director Young.
I'd kinda like to hear what the Director of Finance would like to say about it. Thank you, President Broly. The Plan Commission last week made a recommendation to approve a special use and PUD agreement with Aurora University. As you all know, they recently purchased the old Wolf Run Golf Course, which is approximately 45 acres. And they have acquired that property. They've been through the Plan Commission public hearing process to establish a special use for athletic facilities of various types and sizes on this property. The property is currently zoned R3, and they meet all of the zoning standards with their proposed plan for setbacks, lighting, and parking. The special use that the university is asking for would include a number of different types of athletic facilities that they've asked for some flexibility in the design of how these facilities would be laid out, and would include a baseball field, softball field, a track, some other field activities, as well as soccer complex in the future. The timing of these will be dependent upon how the university goes through their fundraising for individual sports. And you've seen a conceptual plan of the property, basically laying out the fields from north to south along the property. And this may change, and within the plan description that's attached to the special use ordinance, you'll see that there's flexibility for the university to adjust how each individual facility will be placed on the property. But we're confident that they'll meet all of the setback, lighting, and parking lot standards as needed. With regards to landscaping, the staff and the Plan Commission recognize that for security purposes, there would be a different type of landscape buffering treatment that would take place on this property. And it's built into the agreement that between staff and the university will work out the screening provisions specifically to adjacent residents as they come forward with their specifics on the final plans. So, tonight, this would be the first reading of the special use ordinance. This is still a draft ordinance. The staff, along with the village attorney and the university and their attorney, have been working on a plan description, which is attachment B to the ordinance itself. I think, for the most part, the language has been agreed upon. There are a couple areas which we will continue to work on and fine-tune the language as we move forward, and would ask for any comments from the board regarding that agreement, and then, I'm sorry, regarding that plan description, and then look to have final action on this in two weeks, on the 23rd.
Thank you, Rich.
Representatives from the university and their attorney are here tonight, if you have any questions for them as well.
You guys have anything else that you would like to add, or if there's any questions of the petitioner, they are here?
What is the width of the egress and ingress? It's a single point?
The width of the pavement?
Yes.
Approximately 24 feet.
And correct me if I'm wrong, that's the same access location that Wolf Run currently has to Jericho Road?
Good evening. I'm Bruce Goldsmith from the Dykema Law Firm, representing Aurora University. I'd be happily answering any questions you may have about the project.
One other thing that I'd like to add is that this project and this property can stand on its own in terms of the university's needs for the future, in terms of athletic facilities. It is possible that at a future date, they may look to acquire adjacent properties as well, but that's been built into the plan description, anticipating those types of additions to the overall project. But this property can stand on its own in terms of circulation and future water and sewer needs, if, if the facilities need them.
As I understand, this has been thoroughly vetted with the Montgomery Fire?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Were there, the public hearing has occurred on this at the Plan Commission level?
Yes, there was a public hearing held in October with the public invited, adjacent property owners. There was one adjacent property owner in a house that abuts Jericho Road.
Did they express a concern?
They asked about lighting and also traffic, and those comments were reviewed by the Plan Commission. And as I mentioned earlier, with regards to lighting, they will meet all of our lighting standards. It's a case where we're going to take, look at it similar to what happened at Stewart Sports Complex with the Fox Valley Park District a few years ago. And also, with regards to screening and buffering, again, they would, we would look at appropriate screening, whether it be landscape material or possibly fencing, to help buffer from any headlights coming out of a parking situation that would affect this adjacent property owner.
You're committed to that?
Yes, and if I could just take a minute, I'd just give you a little background. Those of you who may know the layout of Aurora University, so the university, starting in 2004, started to expand the campus to the south. As it expanded the campus to the south, it actually had to give up athletic facilities in order to fulfill its educational mission going forward. Because of that, there is no location for, there's no single location for a number of the sports, and as time has gone on, the university has actually generated more interest in other kinds of sports and expanded the sports program. To meet NCAA requirements, the university needs to have a series of fields, one for women's softball, another for men's hardball, baseball. They want to have a facility for track and slash soccer. The track activities requires a place for other activities. And so, the opportunity to get this large a site close to the university was very attractive to the university. The thing that isn't so clear is, in what order would these events occur, where these facilities would be built? Would they do something now, using the existing clubhouse and parking lot, and later start expanding as they get donations for sports facilities? And so, depending on how this all plays out, a series of facilities will be built over time. What you really see is a series of sports fields... time, and what you really see is a series of sports fields, a small area for the referees to change clothes, some kind of bathroom facilities, restrooms, and parking lot. And then it is necessary to support some of the sports, to have lighted fields, so just like at Stewart, we would be respectful to neighbors in terms of the lighting standards. And then with respect to parking, we will buffer where we need to. Some of the existing land has pretty good buffer of landscape material, particularly at the north end, and depending on whether that remains or whether that has to come down as part of the expansion, will determine whether we use fencing or green scape to buffer. But we understand, fortunately, there's not that many residences, so that we can be selective in how we deal with that, with the overall goal of not making it too enclosed, because the university has a policy for safety of its students to not have areas that are totally blocked off from the neighborhood. So they try to avoid board-on-board fences and stuff like that, because they tend to be opportunities for mischief and worse, and so they try to avoid that wherever possible.
I have a question, if I may. And this may be for Pat Kelsey. I see two detention basins on here. They're both labeled as detention basin A. Is that just options as far as, as far as when the development occurs?
I think I could actually answer that. It's, it's not optional. The, the water is coming across the property, and I believe that we need both basins over time.
Okay, thank you.
You mentioned fundraising. Bruce, are you going to move dirt in the fall or in the spring?
We don't have a set schedule yet to act, we hope to use, the fields are designed long-term to be all-season fields, so it takes a lot more money to get that up to speed, and it takes a little process of curing it, too, before it can be used. So we need some, some really donations from alumni to really get that going. We don't have a prospect right now for putting the first field in, but that can change in six months or so, but we're not going to move any dirt for a while.
Okay.
Any other comments of the petitioner? I know that I've been talking with Dr. Mannion on and off for a long while now, and this is the first time I've been able to speak of this publicly, but very excited to welcome Aurora University into the Village of Montgomery. This is the first, I mean, we've never had this before, so very excited for this long-term relationship with Aurora University in our town.
And the university is very appreciative to the warm welcome they've gotten from, from the board and from the Plan Commission. The staff has been extremely helpful in helping us work through these issues so that we, the goal is to have enough flexibility so that this is a plan that could take five or 10 years to play out, and the, the plan description we worked on is helpful toward that goal, and we appreciate that.
Thank you. So if there are no comments, no additional comments from anybody, we'll take these, actually just the first one today. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of Plan Commission on 2015-009 SUPUD?
So moved.
Second?
Second by trustee Marisak. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
That carries six zero. Item B, which is ordinance 1700, is first reading, so that will be on for second reading at our November 23rd meeting, assuming that staff and petitioner can work things, work out the rest of the kinks before then. We'll place this on for separate action at that meeting. So, thank you. Move on to items C and D. We'll tackle these together. Again, we have Plan Commission recommendation of 2015-010 SUPUD amendment for the special use for PUD for Blackberry Creek Commercial Subdivision, and the petitioner is John McVickers. And then item D, which is ordinance 1700, which is actually amending the special use, and again, that's first reading.
Thank you. Also at the Plan Commission meeting last week, the commission recommended approval of a text amendment that goes along with the PUD for Blackberry Creek Commercial Subdivision. This, all three items that were looked at involve signage. There are two multi-tenant signs that have been proposed to meet with what is, the current village code would be 14 feet tall. It does not match up currently with what is within the PUD that was written several years ago. So staff and the commission both agreed that the proposed multi-tenant signs, one of which is off-site in terms of advertisement for properties within the development, I shouldn't say off-site, it's on a different lot, fronting Orchard Road, south of the Firestone Store. And then the second one would be located closer to Route 30 and Orchard for the potential of a new multi-tenant building on the corner, the southwest corner of Orchard and Route 30. The third sign, which was also recommended for approval by the board, by the Plan Commission and staff, was a 10-foot-tall, single-tenant sign, which will be on a few of the vacant lots just south of the previously mentioned multi-tenant building at the corner, in other words, north of the Rosati Center on the west side there. This is a single-tenant building, but requests for a 10-foot-tall monument-type sign. Now, this also would match up with an existing sign that's in front of Rosati's in terms of overall height and scale. There is a pretty good drawing within your packet from a comparison standpoint of looking at signage along Orchard Road, as it is currently within this development, and then also across the street in front of the Starbucks location. And both the commission and the staff recommended approval of this sign because it was within the standards of the signs that have already been established for the corridor. This would also come back as a final ordinance in two weeks.
Thank you, Rich. Any comments or questions from staff on this? I think it's pretty well laid out. My only comment would be to add the overall height to sign number three. I don't see it on the print here. I'm sure it's spelled out in the text somewhere, just to add that. Hearing no comments, we'll entertain a motion for approval of item C, the recommendation of Plan Commission?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yay.
That carries six zero. And then item D, which is ordinance 1700, is first reading. Since I'm not hearing any objections or major changes, at this point, we'd look to put that on consent for the November 23rd meeting.
1701.
Yeah. 1701, sorry. If there are any objections to that, let me know, and we'll move forward as such. Thank you. All right, moving forward. Item E and F. Item E is, again, a recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals for 2015-011 Electronic Message Board Sign Variance for Chiquita Food Market, Montgomery. And then item F, which is ordinance 1702, granting a variance to the sign code for Chiquita Food Market, Montgomery, and that's the first reading of that one. Turn it over to Rich.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, at the Plan Commission meeting last week, the commission heard a request from Chiquita Food Market for a variance to their monumentation sign. Monumentation signs in the village code are allowed with message boards, but the code calls for specifically that the message board portion of any sign be in the lower one-half, and it can make up no more than 30% of the overall sign face of any individual monument sign. Chiquita has requested the variance because they would like to put the message board portion of their sign on the top portion rather than have it on the lower one-half. And they feel that this is a better way to advertise their property, and they're here tonight if you'd like to ask them specific questions. The commission and the Plan Commission both recommended that this was an appropriate variance to grant, that felt that the uniqueness of the site, because of the orientation of the building on an angle, gives them limited ability to have what we would classify as a standard sign package on the front of a building that is parallel to any given right-of-way. Also, the distance of the building itself is over 200 feet from the right-of-way, which is somewhat unusual in terms of the orientation of other businesses, both on the corridor and throughout the community, in terms of the relationship to an individual street. The commission further felt that it was important to look at the corridor and previous sign codes would allow pole signs, as you're all well aware of, that are up and down Douglas Road, primarily on the east side, but also on the, I'm sorry, primarily on the west side, but also on the east side, to be as high as 20 to 22 feet tall. In relationship to this request, obviously, there is an existing sign for the old Montgomery Marketplace. The commission recommended that that sign come down with the, as a condition of granting this variance for this electronic message board sign to be located on the top portion of their monument sign. So again, this item would come back before the board for final action in two weeks, and both the commission and the staff recommend approval. The petitioner and their attorney are here tonight, if you have any questions.
Do we have, well, I could pose the question a different way. What is the distance from the roadway of the proposed sign?
It would be outside of the site triangle that we typically look at. I can't tell you the exact distance. I believe it's about 10 to 12 feet.
I was, my first question was going to be, do we have a sketch?
Yes, I believe that in your packet, there is a, if not, we can definitely provide that as part of the...
It's not in the electronic version.
We, we have that, and we can give you dimensions on the specific entrance. The sign would be adjacent to the, basically the center entrance to the shopping center, but we can, I'm not, I'm sorry, commissioner, or board member, I'm not seeing that in the, in the packet, but we'll provide that.
But the, the, the sign setback would meet current zoning regulations?
Correct.
Are there any public safety concerns?
We discussed it.
Okay.
One question. I had the electronic, the LED portion of the sign, that still meets the 30%?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other comments, questions, thoughts? I think this is entirely appropriate. I thought for sure we would get, get you guys open without having to bring you back to a board meeting, but hearing no comments, we'll accept a motion for the recommendation of the Zoning Board of Appeals, 2015-011.
So moved.
Second?
Second by trustee Marisak. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yay.
Thank you. That carries six zero. And then item F, which is ordinance 1702, which is granting the variance to the sign code for Chiquita Food Market, Montgomery. This is the first reading. We'll take action on this at our next board meeting. Since I'm not hearing any opposition or any thoughts, I'd like to put that on consent for the November 23rd meeting.
Which means you won't have to come back to a third meeting.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Really?
That's what I heard. That's in my announcement. Good luck to you. All right, and move on to item G this evening, which is ordinance 1688, amending section nine of the zoning ordinance regarding self-service storage warehouses in the B3 General Automotive and Wholesale Business District. We discussed this at our last meeting, and this is the second reading, unless staff has anything additional they'd like to add.
I really don't have anything else to add. Within the packet, there is the layout of their proposed amendments or treatment to the facade. We understand completely what their intended use is, and it was recommended by the Plan Commission and staff for approval.
Okay. So item G and H are very similar. G is 1688, which is amending our code to, to allow this in the B3, so unless there's any more comment on that, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Ooh.
Second by trustee Heinz, second by trustee Spurling. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Heinz?
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Then item H, ordinance 1689, which is rezoning and a special use for a self-service storage warehouse and outdoor storage in the Settlers Landing Subdivision, U-Haul Company of Chicago Western Suburbs. Again, this is the second reading. Unless anybody has any comments, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Excellent. And again, we welcome U-Haul to the community. Will you also be opening tomorrow morning? I'm kidding.
If you have some stuff, I want to drop it off. They have room.
Yeah, sure. Well, thank you, and welcome. All right, move on to item I this evening, which is resolution 2015-011, accepting the conveyance of real property from the County of Kane, and this was tabled from our October 26th village board meeting. I'd like to turn that over to our attorney.
Yes, thank you. A few months back, the county had reached out to staff regarding the acceptance of two parcels on Oakden Street. The two parcels were between the fences from the residential property and the right-of-way, and the parcels were on the county's books, even though the village has been providing maintenance for them. So the county reached out, and just as a cleanup item, asked if the village would accept these parcels, since the village has already been doing all the work for them anyway. So this is just to actually complete the transfer from the county to the village.
Any comments? Kind of seeing how long, how long I can go with silence before somebody just made a motion.
Motion to approve.
There you go.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
That carries six zero. Thank you. And then we have revised item J, which is F from consent. It's ordinance 1697, authorizing the destruction of audio and video recordings of executive session. This is closed session meetings, and this is a waiver of first passage on the second. And administrator is hopeful is going to give us a little summary of that.
Certainly. This is a housekeeping item. Trustee Marisak asked if we would pull it off, just since we had not discussed this with you previously. We are allowed to destroy the, any video, audio recordings from executive session after 18 months if we've met certain criteria, which we have to have written minutes of the meeting that have been approved by the board. Assuming that is correct, then we would need an ordinance by the, by the board approving that. We could do it two ways. We could come to you with an ordinance each time we want to do it, or what we're asking to do is pass a standing ordinance that just allows us to destroy them if they meet all the criteria. So that's what you have before you this evening.
And the only reason I asked for it to be pulled from consent is because we hadn't discussed it at all, and it just seemed kind of boilerplate to push it through without us at least opening up the discussion about what it's about. I'm not opposed to it. I just wanted to be able to have discussion about it.
And if I may, just to be clear, this doesn't apply to the written minutes, so the written minutes still go through the separate process that normally would apply in which they have to be re-reviewed on their regular schedule, so this only applies to the audio.
When you say destroy, is it anything cool or just delete?
No explosives?
Like office space with the, disco demolition?
Burn it up.
All right.
Dating myself.
That missed.
So moved.
There you go.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
I was waiting on Mary.
And again, this is ordinance 1697, so we're clear. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yep.
Trustee Heinz?
Yay.
That carries six zero. Thanks. Items for discussion. Item A, we have a liquor license request for 1335 Douglas Road, and I will turn it over to our chief of police, Dan Myers, for an introduction to this topic. I was trying to give you some time to get over there, but...
Thank you, village president, board of trustees. Tonight in the audience is...
Tonight in the audience is Norm Katoome. As you know, he owns the home pantry at 1550 South Douglas. Tonight, he wants to discuss his business at 1335 South Douglas. He's currently asking for a beer and wine-only liquor license. At this time, I'd like to introduce again Norm Katoome.
Good evening, Mr. Brawley, Village members. Like the chief said, a year ago, I came here requesting to move my business from the one location, which is 1335 Douglas, to 1550 Douglas. The reason, because some difficulties with landlord. Now, it's a year gone by, everything's situated. I have a few months left on the lease. My lease still in force. From that day till, I think, sometime in February this, 2016. Anyway, story long short, we start discussing it with the landlord. He said, okay, I'm interested, I'm listening to you. Anyway, we reached an agreement. I told him, you know, convenience store is not going to work for me, because, you know, I'll be competing with myself again. And I tried to keep it as a convenience store. My sales went down to very much zero after, you know, the liquor sales, you know, after we moved the liquor license. So I told him I have something in mind, which is unique to me and something different. I want to move into like a food business, like deli sandwiches, cold cuts, short hours, I have to deal with, you know, cheap, you know, beer, cheap wine, liquor. I just want some, something unique for the neighborhood. Because at that location, I used to do very good on, you know, food sales. Since, you know, I left the new location, it drops, you know, because the neighborhood, I think people, they like to walk to that location, it's close by them, especially, you know, the, the people, you know, close by. They walk and, they like to walk. So anyway, that's my thinking, you know, just beer and wine only, beer and wine only, no, no liquor, no hard liquor, short hours, nine to nine maybe, on Sunday, maybe 10 to five. And I think, you know, beer, liquor is not related to the deli business, but beer and wine, I think it is related, you know, to the business, and it will help, you know, to keep the business going. And that's my request. So, and it's all up to you, so, thank you all.
I have a question. Are you looking to have an area where people can sit down and eat their sandwich and drink their beer or their wine?
Okay, that's a good question. The space I do have, it's like 2,400 square feet. I don't think I will have maybe just two tables or three tables. That would be a good idea, but it depends on the room.
Okay.
You know, but that's, that's a good idea for a sit-down. You know, I think that's a great idea.
So is the.
But no drinking, of course, on the premises, you know. It has to be to-go, you know. If somebody tried to buy a six-pack or a bottle of wine, it has to be on the go, not, you know, when they get home.
So it's packaged liquor?
Correct.
Okay.
No, it's not for consumption.
Beer and wine. I don't know what the zoning or.
Packaged beer and wine.
Exactly.
Okay.
You said you have at least till February, which is only like two months, three months. You're, you're planning to do this longer than just, or you're just trying to fill this in for two, three months? Or are you trying to expand it for years?
Okay. I have until February, that's correct, but I have option of five years. And it's not only that. I used to pay 3,700 a month. Now, Chris, which is the landlord, he's willing to go down on the lease, just to keep me. Due to the difficulties, you know, he said, I will give you a lease for 3,100 for five years, an extension. So he gave me, he emailed me, and he gave me the approval on this. So we are willing to take another five years on that lease.
I would welcome a quality dairy, a deli there. I think that would be a good addition to the neighborhood.
That's what I think, you know. Before, like I bought it, it used to be a 7-Eleven. And the neighbors, they used to tell me, they used to sell a lot. Even the, I have a lady by the name Jenny Baker, she's still working for me. She said, we used to make a lot of sandwiches back then. They used to have a deli. And everything is set there, you know, like I think they have a three-comments tank, they have the drain, you know, the, for the health department. So it's just, you know, some cases, and I'm ready to go. But I think it's a good idea, you know, for the neighborhood.
Has this board previously discussed that end of town being a little heavy on liquor licenses? When we allowed the move to happen, we had said we wouldn't be reissuing a liquor license to the previous.
But that was before Kmart closed? And was Aldi selling alcohol as well?
They were all.
It was before some of the things closed.
They were closed by then.
And the Randall liquor.
Yeah, Randall closed.
Yeah.
Randall. Plus, my main intention not to sell liquor. I don't want liquor. Even Chris, you know, the landlord said, end of lease, not to sell liquor, hard liquor. So he doesn't want it either. But with beer and wine, he said, he will go for it.
But you feel like, I'm very hesitant, obviously, for that very reason. We've had, you know, we had a bunch of places close over the last five years, but since you made the move, which, which we allowed, because you had that right, to move in that same vicinity. When you first came to us and said, I would like to open up a new store in this, in the location you're currently at, we, our thoughts were that it was, we were heavy on liquor, beer, and wine sales in that area. So you moved the location, and we'd said through, through staff or at this, at this board, that we would not look to issue another liquor license for that location in the future. So to come before the board tonight, I think you must feel that in order for your deli to be successful in this location, you do need to sell packaged beer and wine. Is that accurate?
I think it will help, you know. It's a big help. It's a big factor for that type of business. When I, before, it's, it's liquor, it's a hard liquor, you know. It's a liquor store, you can say, you know. Maybe 70% of the sales are liquor. But this one, it's going to be light, even just specialty, you know, beer, wine. It's going to be the expensive one, not the cheap one, you know, something, you know, for the table, not, not just, like, for example, you know, liquor stores, they carry the 99 cents beer. I'm not going to carry this stuff. They carry pints, half pints, shooters. This is something I will not have in that, you know, place. This is some, something, maybe $2, $3 of beer and wine, cold wine, just to help, you know, in case if somebody wants a bottle, it's there. They don't have to make two stops.
I, I, I don't know. I look at your time schedule, and as a business plan, I can see you, since you're already paying rent and away, you could have a deli there now for two months, see how it works out. If you have a lot of calls for liquor, come back to us then and say, the deli's going great, and even do better with beer. But rather than do it now and say, I don't know, what happens if it doesn't work? I guess is what I'm saying. You're, you're, you're just going to be tied in with a longer lease, and that's where you're, you're stuck now. You're, you have a lease, you have two, two more months on it, and you have nothing to do with it. I would think you'd say, let's do a deli now and see what happens in two months.
You know, sir, what, what happened? So I'm not, you know, I, I'm still paying, like I said.
Right.
As much money, it goes basically for me to the drain, you know. But with the new, the discussion with Chris, I have even, he emailed me, and I can cancel at any time within 30-day notice. So I'm not liable for the five years. So my, my lease is five years, but with cancellation, 30-day notice. So I can get out with 30 days. So that's an exit for me. So I'm not going to do the same mistake I did, you know, five years, you know, commitment, and then I have no choice but to pay the rent. So I was, you know, open eye with this.
Yeah. My, one of my concerns is that what's going to happen to the second location that you moved into? If the convenience store, if the deli takes off and does well, are you now going to vacate the second property? And move back to where you were?
Second property, okay, we do great with, you know, cases, liquor, we have, you know, all types, you know. You can say it's a full liquor store, you know. If I tell you, we compete even with Jewel, you know, about, you know, liquor, you know, and their prices and the quality, I mean, selection. So, and we were up there, you know, and sales. So with this location, and there, we open from 7 to 1 o'clock, weekdays until 2:00 in the morning. With this location, my prices will be higher, different, you know, type of beer, different type of wine, like I said. I'm not going to carry, you know, like the $2, $3, you know, six-pack, only the craft beer, you know, the high-end, plus the short hours. So I'm not going to, like, for example, if I have to compete with myself, I'm not going to compete with myself. Let's say if I, example, let's say this bottle, you know, costs here, or I sell it at this location, where I'm at now, $15. There, it's going to be $17 or $18, you know. Not to take advantage of the customers because of the, the service, you know, there, and the type of business. So I cannot afford to sell it. That one is a liquor store, this one is a deli store, a deli with, you know, beverage, that's it.
One thing that I would, one comment that I would make, and maybe help you kind of understand our hesitancy, if we issue a liquor license for that location, and let's say you decide it doesn't work for you, but you just sell the company to somebody else, they can open up and do the same thing. So it's not a short-term decision, once you give a liquor license. It's whether we think it's appropriate for that area, not specifically for you, because we have to think long-term. The other thing is, we can't, we can't, or nor do we want to get into the pricing of it. So if we issue a Class I license, which is for beer and wine, packaged only, we have no, no say, nor do we want to, in the price of beer and wine that you actually sell. So you could very well tomorrow sell the 90 cent, 99 cent beer, or the future owner of that could. So that's another factor that we're thinking about. The other one is hours. You can say that you're going to only open certain hours, but we, our liquor, liquor sales hours are standard throughout the village. So, well, I think we appreciate what you're saying, and we have no reason not to believe what you're saying. If you were to turn around and flip it to somebody else, they have the standard liquor hours, and so would you. You're not, you're not held to that.
Okay, Mr. Brawley, can I answer to this? Okay. On the lease, there are some restrictions, 9 to 9. There, okay, there is some type of license on different, you know, villages, they can restrict even the license, okay, beer and wine only. And if it's sold, let's say to someone else, it can be the same, it has to stay as a deli. So if I sell it to someone else, let's say, okay, then I lose my right to sell it. Then if I come to the village, of course, the new owner has to come and apply for the license. Okay, here's the license he got. If you agree to buy the, his deli store at the same terms, then you can buy it. If not, then there is no license. So there is no trick for me. I'm not looking to trick, you know, the, the city or the, or the village, you know, to do something. My intention, it's really for the deli store, not for a liquor license.
Okay.
So this, it can be in writing, you know. I'm, I, you know, what I say, it's like on paper, and you can, guys, you know, write it on paper, you know, a beer and wine license with restriction, you know.
I guess here's my problem, is how you bought it from the last gentleman who came in here, and he wanted a liquor license. We went round and round with him, and he goes, oh, no, this is the way it's going to be, I just want this liquor license, no problem. And he didn't stay open, what, two months? And he found you. And he goes, come on in, or I got everything laid out for you. And we went, wait a minute, and your hours changed? And in other words, the same thing could happen with this one.
Okay, just to correct your information.
Yeah.
The hours, I kept the hours the same. Matter of fact, they used to open at 5:00 in the morning. So I extended it to 7:00. So it's hard for me. But the weekday hours and the weekend, they used to stay the same, you know, hours. That's why we kept the same hours. Another thing, you know, that guy, he was going out of business. He was, you know, the previous chief, not Mr. Meyer, he just felt, you know, he, they have to, you guys have to give him a license, because he was going out of business. And he laid his employees, and he was really going out of business. And that's the truth, you know. And I don't have no, I don't know the guy before. I never met him, I don't know him, you know. And I came, I took it a chance. He was, his sales was about 28, 30,000 a month. So everyone has different ideas, you know, of business.
The White Hen was very well, and they did not handle.
Exactly, exactly.
They didn't handle liquor or anything, and it was fine. And then this guy came in, like you say, he needed it to keep the business going, but at the same time, he, he was, he already had you, basically, I think, or had somebody, because he went out right away.
I know this guy, I never met him before. One thing, you know, a liquor salesman, he introduced me to him. He said, there's a store in this town for sale. Go and talk to him. That's how we did the business, you know.
And without drumming up, getting back into that, but that just frames the thought process at the board, that, you know, this, the issuing of a liquor license is to you, but it's to the company. And if you wanted to sell that company to somebody else, that's completely under your control and, and not under the village. So with, if you came, if you had opened up the deli, if you opened up the deli in the next few months and come back to this board and say, the deli's going good, but it'd be even better with the beer and wine, to me, that's a deli that then sells beer and wine. If you come in this way, it could very well be a beer and wine sales place that also happens to have.
Sandwiches.
Sandwiches, which we've had, we had a similar request come. That was my only hesitancy, and that's probably the main reason why I wouldn't look to issue a liquor license for this location. So I'm not, I'm not hearing a lot of support from the board, if I'm wrong.
Not at this time.
Speak out. I think, I think, given the situ, the current situation, it's not a location that we would look for a liquor license, based on the fact that you were there and moved to a new location, which, by the way, I was at your new location on Friday, and I, I thought that it was very clean and very busy, by the way. So I appreciate your business there.
Okay. So my understanding, if I want to proceed, go ahead and open the deli business. I can come in two or three months, and if I believe it's, if it's going to help me, it's possibility, correct?
That would change the discussion, but I can't guarantee you today that in February we would.
But at this time, I can say, or you guys can say no, right?
Right.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
So let's see what's the next step, and thank you all, okay?
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I would like to get a clarification. I'm under the impression that when there's a material change in the liquor license or the business that holds it, the license needs to be renewed?
I'm sorry, a material change in what?
The comment was made that if a corporation held a liquor license, and that corporation was sold to a new owner, that the liquor license would remain in effect. was sold to a new owner, that the liquor license would remain in effect. And I was under the impression that it would not.
Chief, you want to take it?
If I may, absolutely. It could, he could sell it, like Trustee Lee said, to another person, and it stays.
The liquor license stays?
Correct.
I thought the liquor license was issued to him as a person.
No, as a corp.
To the corp.
He just has to pass the background check.
So that...
So new corporate representative would have to pass the background check.
Correct.
Right.
And that's, that's what Trustee...
Most of these guys, most of these guys are, hell, already have one somewhere else, so you know they're going to pass it. And that's why they, the guy sells it. But White Hen was there, was very successful, but they sold Corona beer like the whole back room full. I mean, it was definitely a beer place. And yet, the other guy came in, I think from Addison or wherever he came in from, and he mentioned, well, I sell liquor, and that's how he got us into liquor, but he was already, and then he found this guy. And it's just, yeah, but you're right. It's the corporation that, or the name of the business, which I never liked that idea, but I don't know what the law is on it. But to me, you're selling it to a, a person that you know.
Yeah, it depends on how the liquor license is specifically issued. But generally, if it's a corporation, you know, they have to have certain individuals listed, and those individuals have to undergo background checks, but that doesn't prohibit the corporation as an entity, you know, from changing who their manager is. But if it was an individual business that wasn't, you know, on a larger scale, it might change the analysis. If, you know, if that one business goes out of, the one business goes out of business and there's no one else to take over, then of course, you know, that wouldn't go with the property necessarily. It would be associated with the single business.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. All right, moving on to item B, the 2015 tax levy. Funny, it's the thinnest packet in here, and it's over $2 million. With that, I'll turn it over to Director of Finance, Justin Van Vorn.
Thank you, President Brawley. State statute requires the village announce its estimated and proposed 2015 property tax levy at least 20 days prior to the passage of the tax levy ordinance. That ordinance is scheduled for approval on December 14th of this year. Staff recommends that the village board announce an estimated and proposed levy of $2,153,988. The next page contains the calculation of the proposed levy. At the top, the total EAV is based off the percentage of prior year EAV in each county, so what's in Kane County versus Kendall County, as well as we receive a report every year in the fall from Kane County with, with the new estimated EAV. We received that on 9/21/15, and that is what the total EAV is based off of. The next line is new property. The new property is equivalent to approximately $10.8 million of fair value, and this is the EAV of that new property. The CPI used with the property tax extension limitation law, which that's the fifth line down, otherwise known as the tax cap, is, for this year, is 0.8%. Staff consistently recommends capturing this percentage since it is gone once passed over, especially with the unknown at the state right now. The estimated property taxes, including new construction, are $37,798 above the prior year. This equates to an estimated increase of $6 per residential unit or 50 cents per month. If there are any questions, I will certainly answer those at this time.
Comments? This is just for discussion.
For your information, there will be a public hearing at the second meeting in November for the levy. We'll discuss it again, and then we'll look for approval at the first meeting in December.
If there are no comments.
Are you, are you receiving the payments for the taxes that are collected by the state now?
There are three taxes we are not receiving right now. One is motor fuel tax, one is use tax, and the third is the video gaming tax. Right now, we're approximately $200,000 behind from payments from the state, and add just short of $100,000 per month that we do not receive those payments. So...
The property tax we're getting paid.
Property tax we are receiving from the two counties, yes.
The county. The income tax, or the LGDF, is the one that was discussed. We are receiving that currently, but we don't know, you know, the state may still cut us off on that to make up for what we've received. So, but we are currently receiving those payments.
On that, there's a, there's a bill that they'll discuss November 10th in the veto session. Wow. So we might know more after that, but we also might not.
The one tomorrow is to allow them to let go of the motor fuel tax, the three taxes that Justin was talking about that they're currently withholding, because those are not part of the budget discussion, not part of the general budget, the general fund for the state. So they are looking to release those, but we should, yeah, we should know more after tomorrow, because they may...
Those are collect, they collect and just pass, it's just a pass-through form, right?
Correct.
Except for now, it's a collect and hold.
Do you know who introduced that bill? Who sponsored it?
Oh, I don't recall off the top of my head now.
I know it's 4305.
Yeah, it's 4305. I'm saying Marty, I'm thinking Marty Lyons, but...
I read it in the paper.
I was under the impression it was one of our local representatives, but maybe not.
I was thinking Marty Lyons off the top of my head, but I'd have to look that up.
And I, I believe Representative Kiffewitt and, I forget, but we had a few of the Democrats, local Democrats, that did sign on to support that. And I'm not to imply that nobody else did, but I saw those two. So I know we want to have more discussion on this, so can we add this to the next board meeting for discussion? Is that when the public hearing is?
Yes.
Okay. Well, then, it's already on there.
Yep.
Yeah. We'll do it that way. All right, item C, the village schedule of meetings for 2016.
This, prior to the beginning of every calendar year, we provide you with a list of the meetings for the following year, just in case you have anything you would like to change. Schedule's the same as it always is, second and fourth Mondays, the Tuesday in between for Committee of the Whole, all the same dates and, and times. But we just bring it to you in case you have any issues, anything you'd like to change before we put it into effect.
And we, of course, cancel meetings we don't need.
Correct.
Which we routinely do. Okay. If you have any thoughts, pass that on to staff before the, well, before our future meeting. You have to pass this before January, so...
Yes.
All right. Under new or unfinished business, I would like to mention two things. One, Chiquita Food Market will open tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m., so I hope and expect that everybody is there at 8:00. And then the Webster Street Crossing, if you want to comment on that.
Yes, Mr. President. BN, BNSF Railway has agreed to replace the three crossings at the Webster Street Crossing, if you will. There are three tracks, and all three of those will be replaced. They plan to shut the road Friday, November 13th at 7:00 a.m., and they tell us they will be done and have the road reopened by Tuesday at 5:00, Tuesday the 17th. So it's a five-day road closure. Detour will be in place down to Watkins.
This is one instance where, four months ago, five months ago, we started talking about this, thanks to Trustee Spurling, and commented on their web online forum. And I know it's like a quasi-government, but ICC and BNSF, I've never seen an entity move this fast to remedy a problem. And the construction will start and be completed in less than a week, because it's prefab. So I kind of have the hope that maybe government, local government, the state, and federal government could move that fast at some point in the future, but...
I got the impression in our pre-con meeting that they are aware of the condition of the rail, and they know they're on borrowed time.
Awesome.
I'd like to know what the over-under is on having that thing open by Tuesday, but...
It's hard for me to say. We're not really involved in it at all. Typically, the railways do move rather quickly. Five days is pretty aggressive, so we shall see.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments for new or unfinished? Anybody want to mention anything about a Packers game, or not this week, maybe next week?
You mean my friend, my friend Lily White, wearing his non-Packer gear? All right, if there are no other comments, kind of shocked, but...
Meanwhile, my Ohio State Buckeyes are still undefeated, so...
Yeah. Future meetings, HBC, Monday, November 16th is canceled, Committee of the Whole is canceled, Beautification Committee is canceled, but we will have the village board meeting on the 23rd of November. With that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss two, or for two purposes. The employment of employee pursuant to 5LCS 120 over 2C1, and then discuss litigation, which is filed and pending.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Ben.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Excellent. Meeting back to order and entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll, please.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Ben.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Number adjourned. Thank you.